Good evening, everyone. As the city recorder, I call the meeting to order. According to paragraph thirty-three of the Rules of Order and Procedure for the City Council, when the mayor and the council president are absent, the city recorder shall call the council to order and take roll call. If a quorum is present, the council shall proceed to elect by majority vote of those present a chairperson for the meeting to act for the remainder of the meeting or until either the mayor or the council president appear. I find that a quorum is present and that the mayor and the council president are absent. Nominations are open for someone to temporarily chair the meeting. Do I hear a motion? What's your motion?
I'd like to nominate David McCarthy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I will now turn the meeting over. Motion carried unanimously. I will now turn the meeting over to the chairperson to proceed with the flag salute and the agenda.
Thank you. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it proper they remain here or do I need to?
Remember, you can still vote.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We have some presentations. So we have the Hermiston School District. I see Mr. Bacon. Come forth, please.
Good evening. Well, believe it or not, there's a few things that have been going on. So I'll try. This might be a little longer than it has been in the past. So one of the highlights that we had just about last week, we had our high school students that are part of our Education Pathways Program come to the district office where we provided a training that all of our elementary teachers receive. It's called the E-C-R-I, and that stands for the Enhanced Core Reading Instruction Program. And we were able to take our Education Pathway students and introduce them to that concept and then run them through a full-day training. So getting them ready to go into college as they pursue the education career was a pretty neat experience for everybody as they were able to spend the day going through and learning about it. So just another effort that we're trying to make sure that we have out there to help build a stronger base for our recruitment and retention. We're also, the time of year, it's getting a little bit cooler. So we are gearing up for coats for kids is happening and taking place. And so just a reminder, if you hear anybody looking for clothing or support or that wants to make a donation, they can reach out to any of the school's counselors who will definitely help them and get them all lined out with the process and what to do. Christmas Express, we are in the process. Tomorrow, we'll actually be having a meeting partnering again with HPD to how we can best support that process and help support our community through the Christmas Express. More information will be coming out with that here in a little while. Knowledge Bowl is having their third annual competition here in Hermiston on the fourteenth. And that is, we have almost, we're expecting right at a hundred students coming from our region. So that's all the tri-city schools are coming down and being a part of that. So again, another neat experience to welcome community, other communities into ours. This weekend for junior high students, so grades six through eight, we have our ADS, AWS, sorry, Girls in Tech Day is happening, taking place. And that's where we have industry professionals come in and work and put on little sessions for our middle school young ladies. And they get to interact and talk back and forth. And it's a, I was able to attend a little bit last year. It was a pretty neat experience to watch happen. So we have a Family Resource Night coming up on the twentieth of November. And this is a great opportunity where we bring folks, invite to come into the high school. And we have groups from the county come in that are able to provide supports to the families. And some of those are the Copes for Teens, the Marisol Clinic, Human Total Accounting Care Program, our social workers along with other groups just to be able to provide any support that our families might have. So that's be happening on the twentieth of November. Thanksgiving's coming up. So just for your guys' information, that will be the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. So students will return on December the second. And then athletics, busy nights. Actually, as soon as we get done here, heading back to the volleyball game. So they're playing volleyball against Walawala right now. Hopefully, as soon as they won the first set and they're right in the middle of the second one, with that win, we'll take on Kennewick again and get them. So anyways, the girls are heading on through that and doing well. Cross-country boys, I was able to attend on Saturday and watch them. And our boys team finished twelfth overall in the state. We had two finish in the top twenty. So Jason Rodriguez finished seventh overall. And one of our freshmen, Leroy Lozano, finished twelfth. So strong representation from our boys programs. We did have one young lady compete, and she finished seventy-third over, out of the participants, out of almost two hundred runners, which, nice job, way better than I could ever imagine. So with that, we talked about cross-country a little bit. And so just to honor and recognize, we had two coaches recognized by the MCC as Coaches of the Year. That was our volleyball coach, Dan Headley, and then cross-country coach, Troy Blackburn. So congratulations to them. And with all of that, winter sports start next week. So Monday, the eighteenth, they'll begin practices. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bacon.
Have a great night.
All right. Now we're at our first opportunity for a citizen input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do the following. One, please limit your comments to not more than five minutes. State your name and address and direct your comments to the chair. Do we have any takers? All righty. Next, we're on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the council? All right. Are there any council comments? Any public comment on consent agenda items A through G? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G. Roll call? Sorry. Sorry. So a motion from Jackie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Linton, second by Counselor Brown. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto ordinances and resolutions. A, ordinance number two, three, six, seven, fats, oils, and greases, fog requirements. Manager Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Morgan, please.
Guess I could use my microphone so that folks online could hear us. The ordinance before you this evening would strengthen a number of requirements. So it would require that grease traps and grease interceptors be added. Additionally, important to keep in mind for the council, all of these changes only apply to commercial sewer dischargers. So this doesn't apply to any residential customers or anything like that. So requires commercial sewer dischargers who have a possibility of discharging fats, oils, and greases. So these are things like restaurants, car washes, those types of things. They would be required to install grease traps or grease interceptors. Probably more importantly for our community actually is that it would require maintenance of those grease traps and grease interceptors. Because of the age of a lot of our commercial properties in town, because of the age of our community, which is relatively new compared to a lot of older communities around the region, around the state, a lot of these commercial operators most likely already have grease traps because they've been required, is a requirement of building codes for many years by now. But some of them may not. So will require grease traps and grease interceptors for those that don't. But then for those that do, and moving forward, those that have them, will be required to actually maintain their grease traps. So a grease trap, basically all it does is it slows down the water that's coming out of your, you know, kitchen or whatever's creating the grease, slows it down, traps it there so that that fats, oils, and greases can rise to the top, congeal there, and allows the water that doesn't include fats, oils, and greases to continue on out to the sewer main. So that's ultimately what we're trying to do is we're trying to arrest that fats, oils, and greases on that person's property before it gets to the public sewer main. So requiring those to be installed, requiring them to be maintained, which is to say cleaned out, to have somebody actually go in and remove the grease every so often. It's not a complex process, but from what I'm told, it's not a peeling process to engage in going and cleaning that out. And so I think there's a lot of folks or a lot of commercial dischargers in our community that may already have grease traps, but they've neglected them, not cleaned them out. And so what happens when they get filled with grease because they haven't been cleaned out over time, that then the water just flows past and ultimately ends up making it to our sewer system. So that's why I say that's probably the more important component of this requirement is to just require ongoing maintenance. With adoption of this code, it would require that those dischargers that have the potential to discharge fog to our system receive a permit from the city to be a fog discharger within sixty days of code adoption. So we would anticipate that to be around March first because we're making the effective date the beginning of the year. Then additionally, not only would they be required to receive a permit, but they would be required to come into compliance with the code within a hundred and fifty days of code adoption. So that would be sometime around June first. Now, when we write city code, we want it to stand the test of time and be there for a long time without us having to go in and monkey with it. But we also know that when we're standing up a whole brand-new program, there's going to be components of the code that, there's going to be some gear grinding when we get around to actually implementing the program. But once it's up and running, they'll make a lot of sense. And so included in the code is the allowance for these dischargers to receive a variance. And so I would recommend that in the administrative implementation of this code, that as we're rolling the program out, folks will come in, receive a permit. If they have already a grease trap in place, then they would receive their permit and begin to be monitored from that standpoint. If they do not already have a grease trap, then I would recommend that we simply automatically grant a variance and allow them up to twelve months of additional time to install a grease trap. Because again, our whole goal is to eventually get all these folks to have a grease trap. So then, long-term, that would be in place. But I think additionally, just from a staffing standpoint, there's going to have to be somebody that rolls this program out. They're going to be dealing with, you know, sixty to eighty potential new permities that they're going to have to be answering questions, taken through the process, and those types of things. And so they're going to have their hands full just with getting those, you know, permits coming in. So after that initial flush of people coming in and getting permitted, if we grant the ones that don't have grease traps, variance of twelve months, that will then give us more time to, once we get past that initial flush, we'll be able to start focusing on helping them to come into compliance and actually get a grease trap installed. So as I mentioned, somebody's going to have to do that. And so this is, this is a program and an issue that frankly, we've been putting off for quite a while. We've known that fats and greases have been a challenge in our sewer system. But it comes with the cost of actually, you know, having somebody go out there and monitor these things for compliance and do that type of thing. And so we are finally now recommending addition of a new staff person in our Public Works Department that we're calling our Environmental Water Quality Specialist. Total cost of employing that person between their salary, you know, that's only maybe about a third of that cost. And then insurance, payroll taxes, overhead, they're going to have to have vehicle, equipment, those types of things. We anticipate the total cost of that position to be about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per year. But additionally, we don't anticipate that this person is going to spend a hundred percent of their time on this program. We have several other programs that we've been putting off for a number of years as well. And so we anticipate that this position will spend about a third of their time on the fog program. So about a third of that total cost is really going to be allocated toward the fog program. Additionally, we've been working for about the past twelve months and still have about twelve more months of work to do on implementing and rolling out an industrial pretreatment program. So that would be working specifically with some of our dischargers like the CBD plant, Amazon's data centers, once they get up and running, and some of those industrial-level dischargers. They'll spend about a third of their time working with those programs. And then additionally, on the water side of things in our Public Works Department, this goes all the way back to the nineties. We've been putting off really enforcing on our backflow prevention program on the water department. That's something that the Organ Health Authority has been after us for as long as I've been here, which is over twelve years now. And so they're no longer asking. They're telling us that we need to do a better job of enforcing on that. So this position's going to spend about a third of their time working on the backflow prevention program as well. So ultimately, the total costs of monitoring enforcement of this program should be somewhere in the range of around forty-seven thousand dollars. However, again, the whole point of this program is to try and prevent fats, oils, and greases from getting to the sewer. And so the reason we're doing that is because if they do end up making it to the sewer, we have to somehow clean out the sewer. And so that's what we've been doing, kind of more of a reactive approach to fats, oils, and greases for a long time. And so there's a lot of cost doing that. But if we're preventing that fats, oils, and greases from getting to the sewer, then we should also see some cost savings by not having to go out and clean our lines so often. So probably one of the biggest single capital components of that is one of our big VACON truck, which is just basically the big rolling vacuum that we send out, and it sucks out the sewer lines when they need to be cleaned. New one of those, we just bought in two thousand and eighteen, cost about a half million dollars. And so we roughly estimate the hourly cost of operating the VACON truck to be about twenty dollars per hour. Additionally, that's just for operating the truck itself. Additionally, though, we have to roll two employees to run that truck when it goes out there. And we operate that truck about half the year. So we send two workers out for two weeks every single month to clean what we call our bad lines list. So those are the sewer mains that we know are challenges and always have clogging issues. And just so happens that a lot of them tend to be downstream of restaurants. So likely have some fog issues. And so the total cost of staffing, as well as the equipment for cleaning the bad lines list, we therefore estimate to be in the range of around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the hope is that once we roll the fog program out, after it gets up and operational, after a couple of years and folks are complying with the program, we hope to see a net savings of about thirty percent reduction in how much we're going to have to go out and actually clean those sewer lines. And so that should, we hope, result in a cost savings to the sewer utility of around forty-five thousand dollars per year. Yeah.
So if I can do a little math as far as like what the public is actually going to see, because like we can do this math over here, but it's like what the public is actually going to see is this will be fewer blocked intersections because we have to stop and take care of the pipes and the stuff. And so this is going to be time saved for the public. It's going to be restaurants that are staying open because the lines are not backed up. So this is going to be continued profits because those businesses are staying open. So that's cost outside of our own budget, but it's cost that the community is saving because we're not having to replace lines. And so, yeah, we're spending this money, but the community is not spending money in time wasted and, you know, products not sold as well.
One of the big concerns or big costs also would be you don't want to experience a sewer backup into your. Those are costly. They don't occur often because we do a good job of cleaning the lines. But those are the really bad ones that we're trying to avoid. So when we look at rolling this program out and setting a rate then, because it's also inequitable to assume that the, you know, residential sewer customer should be covering the cost of, you know, fats, oils, and greases when we know the bulk of the issue is coming from these commercial operators. And so we'd be setting a rate to help cover the cost of operating this system. So if we anticipate the total cost of compliance to be around forty-seven thousand dollars per year, but we hope, long-term, to see an annual cost savings of around forty-five thousand dollars per year, that should result in a net cost of running the program around twenty-six hundred dollars per year. And then we estimate, we won't know for sure until we get the program up and running, but we estimate the total number of commercial operators that would have to receive a permit to be somewhere in the range of sixty to maybe as high as eighty potential users that are going to end up, need to be permitted. So when we divide the costs by the number of permities, we come up with just a flat across-the-board recommended rate that we would add as a surcharge onto those fog customers' monthly bills of three dollars and sixty-two cents per month. So looking at what that looks like, and, you know, we're not the only ones that struggle with fog. The challenge with implementing a fog program is that it's costly. And so communities smaller than us, they do like what we've been doing for a long time as we've grown into this, is they didn't actually have a dedicated person that had the time to actually go out and enforce and check to make sure that people were complying with not discharging fog to the system. So it just gets baked into their rates. Other larger communities do have fog rates and baked into their rates. And so a lot of utilities, ours included, the rates will change as your usage increases. And so it's important to look at a couple of different volumes of discharger. So not all sewer and water users use the same amounts of water and sewer. And so Bend and Redmond, they're both two communities that do have a specific fog program. And so if we look at the total bill for, this would be an example of someone that discharges around five thousand gallons per month. An example of that would be a small restaurant without any indoor seating, no drive-through, or something like a convenience store may discharge in that range of water every month. So if that same user were located in Bend, their monthly bill would be around a hundred and thirty-four dollars a month. In Redmond, it'd be about sixty-one dollars per month. And in Hermiston, if you include that flat three dollar and sixty-two cents per month charge would also be around sixty-one dollars per month. If we look at a larger fog discharger, so the example here would be a fast-food establishment with a drive-through or a dine-in restaurant, so something like a Burger King or a Denny's type of an operation. In Bend, their monthly sewer bill is around six hundred and fifty bucks a month. In Redmond, it'd be about a hundred and eighty dollars. And in Hermiston, with this recommended rate, it'd be about a hundred and sixty-six dollars. So the reason why you start to see some separation there between Hermiston and Redmond's is because our rate, our fog rate is just that flat three dollar and sixty-two cents per month, regardless of whether you've discharged five thousand or thirty-five thousand gallons per month. So Redmond's does scale a little bit more with more discharge. So next steps, council could choose to adopt this this evening. If that's the case, we would anticipate the effective date to be January first. Then after that, the fog permities would be required to obtain a permit from the city by approximately March first. And then with that hundred and fifty days to be either compliant or receive that variance, they would have to either be in compliance or have received a variance by June first. So that is the presentation for the ordinance. Also later on this evening, you have the resolution for actually establishing the rate. So the ordinance just establishes the code sections. And then immediately after this, you'd be adopting or potentially adopting the rate.
Not that we're here to name names, but do we have a history of what we would estimate are repeat offenders for what this is seeking to solve?
Yeah. So I have a, I've taken to calling a certain area of town Grease Alley. So we know where the hotspots are, and we've experienced sewer overflows. There was one just here a few years ago that really sticks out in my mind because we had sewage flowing in the gutter of the street out in front of the post office. And so that is downstream from a number of restaurants. And so we had a, two open houses with, we sent mailers to all commercial accounts in the city and invited them to come to an open house where we could explain the fog program so they could understand, you know, what they'd be looking at. And so we actually had one of those restaurant owners or operators that is in the middle of Grease Alley, and they attended the fog open house and talked to us, and they understood definitely what the fog issue was. And they also indicated that, you know, when they leased their space, their landlord told them that there is no grease trap in their building. And so that stands to reason why we're seeing a lot of fog, you know, downstream of their location. So they understood and were supportive of the changes, and that's probably why they're not here this evening. So they understand the program and were receptive to that.
Do you estimate, actually, how do you estimate we're going to be determining what entities would fall under this category?
Yeah. So a lot of it is going to be self-reporting. I mean, we're going to have an idea of basically restaurants and car washes, gas stations, those types of things. And so we will go out and send mailers to them, you know, inviting them to come into compliance. But for some of the other ones that may be a little, you know, more out there or that we wouldn't have necessarily thought of, some of those are just going to rely on self-reporting.
Thank you. I think it's our Counselor Linton.
I would like to know, do you know what the price of the grease traps are?
Yeah. So it depends on the scale of operation that you have. So we had also the operator of the movie theater was here at one of our open houses, and they indicated that, you know, their grease traps, the size of like a shoebox, and, you know, it only cost, it didn't cost them more than a thousand dollars. We anticipate that the most expensive, you know, top-of-the-line, you know, handling huge amounts of volume would not be more than around five to six thousand dollars is what the estimate is.
Okay. And you were saying if they did not comply by June first, that there'd be variance? Can you define that for me, please?
Yeah. So the variance process, and it's spelled out in the ordinance, they would basically just have to come in and ask for variance. And then city staff would review their request and grant that. And so my recommendation for how that variance would work for the initial round is as long as they've come in and they've asked for a variance, we would immediately grant it to them for twelve months. But in terms of requesting it, it would be similar to all of our other administrative appeal processes.
Will there be any type of fines if they go past a certain time? Like you extend it three months or so, there'll be fines?
Yes. And that's included in the proposed code. So it would be similar to, again, once this is up and operational, then that's again, the teeth of this program. And that's where this staff person comes in, is they're going to be going out, checking to make sure that people have had their grease traps, you know, cleaned out. And if they're repeat offenders and not getting them cleaned out, then we can levy fines on them.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Counselor Myers.
Okay. So I have had a number of businesses ask me, because we all got the letter, that this would not affect any of them unless they have these components.
Yeah. Unless they're discharging fog. Yeah. Yeah. We've had, and, you know, we had a laundromat show up to the open house, and they were asking. And we don't anticipate that they discharge any fog. So something like that would not be required.
Yes. Because I've had a number of business owners call now about that.
Yeah. And that's kind of the challenge when we're initially rolling the program out is we don't know who's out there. And so we took the approach of the blunt force of just, we're going to send a mailer out to every commercial account, which was about four hundred commercial businesses, even though we, just to notify them that this was out there, but we knew that was going to cause some confusion with some folks.
Right. You know, when we got one, accounting offices don't have a lot of grease very often.
Don't be, don't be pouring your bacon grease down the.
Counselor Houston?
So I know that, you know, historically, we've had like facade grants and that sort of thing to make our buildings look pretty. Do we have any sort of grants or anything that we're aware of so we can help our buildings smell pretty? So any sort of things to help fund these one thousand, five thousand dollar things that we are asking them to use so that they are in compliance?
Yeah. So that's something that I was thinking about as we've gone through this. And that's ultimately where I think that twelve-month variance process is going to come in because we won't know until we really get into it, you know, what the scope is or how many, you know, lack a grease trap. But yeah, some of my concerns largely center on the downtown core area. Uh, but yeah, my, some of my concerns, uh, largely center on the downtown core area where we have the urban renewal district. And so, uh, possibly that could be a potential source, but, uh, yeah, I think there, we'll, we'll find out more as we get into it.
That leads me to a thought, I'm sorry, did you have more? Do you, do we have in any estimation on whether or not more of the problems that exist are improper maintenance or just lack of grease traps?
We'll find out, but my guess is that, uh, the vast majority of it is because of lack of maintenance. Again, because of the age of a lot of the commercial buildings in town and, and when grease traps have been required as part of building permits, uh, I anticipate that a lot of them already have them, but some people may just not have ever even touched them. And so that's where we think most of the issue is coming from.
I spoke to a colleague of mine who had mentioned that they witnessed a restaurant, uh, dispose of their grease in a dumpster. If such a cases like that was happening, that would probably be resolved by the fact that they probably don't have grease traps. So under this ordinance, they would be required to have one in this, could, uh, remove it properly.
You know, I'm not sure, frankly, what they do with the grease after they've cleaned it out of the grease trap. So you have, you know, now you have this semi-solid grease. I don't know what the requirements are for them to dispose of it, if you can just throw that in the dumpster or not. But that could be what was taking place.
Thank you. Councillor Brown, did you have any questions? Perfect. Anything else? All right, is there any public comment? All right, then in that case, excuse me. One moment. Um, I'll call for a first reading of the ordinance and, uh, to be read by the city and call for a roll call.
Yes.
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 All right, Mr. Toby?
First reading of ordinance number two, three, six, seven by title only. An ordinance amending title five of the Hermiston Municipal Code by amending chapter 51 entitled Sewers to include a fats, oils and grease fog abatement program.
All right, thank you. Temperatures Chair, the request that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting and that the second reading be by title only and calls for roll call? Roll call?
Yes.
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 City Attorney?
Second reading by title only of ordinance number two, three, six, seven. An ordinance amending title five of the Hermiston Municipal Code by amending chapter 51 entitled Sewers to include a fats, oils and grease fog abatement program.
Thank you. Uh, in that case, I'll entertain a motion that ordinance number two, three, six, seven be adopted and become effective 30 days after adoption by the city council.
Second.
Perfect, uh, Myers and Harden, thank you very much. Uh, roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next on to item, uh, eight B, resolution number two, three, four, five, master fee schedule at FOG rate. City Manager Smith?
So, Mr. Morgan addressed, uh, the reasoning, the, the, how we calculated the proposed fee and that's the only change that we're proposing to the master fee ordinance, or master fee resolution.
Perfect. Any council comments?
$3.62 a month.
$3.62 a month. Any other council comments? All right, is there any public comments on resolution number two, twenty-three, forty-five?
I did have some comments.
Go ahead.
I had some questions, that's, this is on the master fee?
Yes.
Okay, uh. I will, I wanted to know, was after going through it brief, um, that, uh, is the amount that's being charged on the fees the same as last year and the year before, when is the last time this has increased? Cause I didn't see too many reds, I think I saw something, some changes at like at the, the very end, so I was kind of curious.
The only change, the only proposed change is adding this fog rate. So all the rest of them have been in place, I mean, when was the last time we had changed, a few months ago? Yeah, for a different new rate. So, I mean, we did recently go through these, most all of them and looked at them and have updated them as part of the budget process that we went through. But I, I couldn't tell you, I mean, there may be a couple in there that we haven't looked at, but we've, we've looked at most of them and updated them.
Thank you.
I think, just to clarify, you're just wondering whether or not this rate is new or has been updated?
No, uh, I was kind of looking at all of it, just couldn't remember when the last time we went over it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions then? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three, forty-five and lay it upon the record.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. Harden and Myers this time. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Right, on to Chair's report, I guess. Uh, don't have a whole lot since I missed the last council meeting, although I just want to urge the council that Lily did send out an email regarding the coffee with the councillor city chat that we'll be doing. I think the next one is at Main Street Cake and Cork. If you are interested, please respond to Lily for that. Also, email sent earlier out today regarding council appointments for city committees. Um, I know we have some candidates in the audience who will also need to be considered for that, so make sure you're reaching out. Um, and councillor Primer, who will be our new mayor, is also CC'd on that. So make sure you're sending any of your preferences out that way. Other than that, I don't have anything else, uh, for me. Uh, city committees then, oh, I went out of order, sorry. I went on to nine B, so, so nine A, city committee reports, any committee reports? Perfect, then I'll just skip over to nine C, uh, any other council reports? All right, youth advisory report? You don't have to speak, but.
We have nothing new to report at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, City Manager Smith, it's your turn.
I just, uh, since we didn't pull this out of the consent, I just wanted to remind you that you've canceled the December 23rd council meeting, just so everybody's aware that you don't have to come right, you know, the day before, the day before. And then I really have nothing else to report.
Perfect. Oh, also another one that Lily, just before I forgot, is the, um, holiday, um, Christmas express, uh, party. There's also an RSVP in there and details on what you are supposed to bring to the potluck. So keep an eye out for that as well. All right, in that case, meetings adjourned.